Council Barton, absent. Council Capano?
Present.
Council Chakutis, absent. Council Calucci?
Present.
President Council Seer?
Present.
President Council Field?
Present.
President Council Lapierre?
Present.
President Council Lozey?
Present.
President Council Net?
Present.
President Council Staubed?
Present.
President Council Walsh?
Present.
Before we do our moment of silence tonight, Fuzzy was here, he would definitely be saying something about a Lynn Harrow, Pete Pedro, but I also know how close Brian Field is to the family, so I'm going to ask Brian to stand and say something about Pete, and then ask everyone else to stand for a moment of silence.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just on behalf of everybody here on the council and the entire community from the city, I wanted to acknowledge Mr. Pedro for his outstanding service to the city within the school system for many years, and currently at the age of 77, was still working in the fact O'Leary School, and a number of his family members who are still active in the community, whether it's through sports or just working with children in general. And I would ask my colleagues to stand and recognize Mr. Pete Pedro in a moment of silence.
Please stand for a moment of silence. And also remember Peggy LaBrera.
Also, Mr. President, special prayer for Molly Bishop Ramsey.
And also Joseph McDuff.
Danny Revelonis. Yarmouth Police K-9 Officer Sergeant Sean Gannon.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have communications? I'm sorry, motion to accept the minutes.
Still moved.
Second.
For the last meeting. Motion made.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Dear councilors, please be advised, I have chosen to appoint Timothy Leonard, 65 Bridle Path Road, Lynn, to the position of Purchasing Agent for the City of Lynn, and hereby submit his name for council confirmation as provided by the City Charter. Sincerely, Peter M. Karen, CFO, Director of Assessing.
What's the wish of the council?
Second.
Motion made.
Second.
Seconded. Roll call.
Council Barton, absent. Council Capano?
Yes.
Yes. Council Chakutis, absent. Council Calucci?
Yes.
Yes. Council Seer?
Yes.
Yes. Council Field?
Yes.
Yes. Council Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes. Council Lozey?
Yes.
Yes. Council Net?
Yes.
Yes. Council Staubed?
Yes.
Yes. Council Walsh?
Yes.
Yes.
Want to stand, Tim? Congratulations. Community.
Dear councilors, I am hereby appointing Mr. Robert Tucker, 295 Lynn Shore Drive, to serve as Chair of the Lynn Community Television Board. His term will be effective immediately and will expire on October 31st, 2019. Sincerely, Mayor Thomas McGee. Dear councilors, I am hereby appointing Mr. Michael Cerulli, 40 Bullfinch Road, to serve on the Lynn Community Television Board. His term is effective immediately and will expire on October 31st, 2019. Sincerely, Mayor Thomas M. McGee. Dear councilors, I am hereby appointing Mr. Joseph Corrit, 83 Maplewood Road, to serve on the Lynn Community Television Board. His term is effective immediately and will expire on October 31st, 2019. Sincerely, Thomas M. McGee, Mayor. Dear councilors, I am hereby appointing Mr. Michael Marks, 24 Cumberland Road, to serve on the Lynn Community Television Board. His term is effective immediately and will expire on October 31st, 2019. Sincerely, Mayor Thomas M. McGee. Dear councilors, I am hereby appointing Mr. Joseph Scanlon III, 236 Parkman Ave., to serve as the Treasurer of the Lynn Community Television Board. His term is effective immediately and will expire on October 31st, 2019. Sincerely, Mayor Thomas M. McGee.
What's the wish of the council?
Motion approved.
Motion made.
Second.
Seconded. Roll call.
Council Barton, absent. Council Capano?
Yes.
Yes. Council Chakutis, absent. Councilor Calucci?
Yes.
Yes. Council Seer?
Yes.
Yes. Council Field?
Yes.
Yes. Council Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes. Council Lozey?
Yes.
Yes. Council Net?
Yes.
Yes. Council Staubed?
Yes.
Yes. Council Walsh?
Yes.
Yes.
Congratulations to all the mayors appointees, public carers.
We have the petition of Michelle Doucette, owner of Munchies, for permission to open an ice cream store slash parlor with seating at 578 582 Chestnut Street.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor, please approach the podium. State your name and your address, please.
Michelle Doucette, 200 Vantage Terrace, Swans Get Masked. Oh, I'm speaking in favor of Munchies, I'm sorry.
Okay. All right, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor?
Calvin Anderson, 12 Concord Street, Lynn, Massachusetts. And this is in my neighborhood, and if it's the place I think it is, I can't wait for it to open.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed? Anyone in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed. Council Lozey?
Mr. President, motion to approve.
Seconded. Motion made to approve. Seconded. Discussion. Council Lapierre?
Question, Mr. President, for Ms. Doucette, if you wouldn't mind approaching. Since I live a stone's throw from where you'll be opening, the critical question is, what ice cream will you be serving?
Oh, um...
Richardson?
No. Have you ever heard of Captain Dusty's?
Yes, I'm very familiar.
Captain Dusty's, I actually worked for Lisa Barley. I'm very close with Lisa, so they're going to be helping me open Munchies.
Captain Dusty's a good brand.
Very good ice cream, yes.
Quality, thank you.
Anyone else? Motion made, seconded, roll call.
Council Barton, absent. Council Capano?
Yes.
Yes. Council Chakutis, absent. Council Calucci?
Yes.
Yes. Council Seer?
Yes.
Yes. Council Field?
Yes.
Yes. Council Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes. Council Lozey?
Yes.
Yes. Council Net?
Yes.
Yes. Council Staubed?
Yes.
Yes. Council Walsh?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries. Next public hearing.
Petition for a signed permit at Bread Dreams, located at 66 Market Square.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed. Anyone in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anybody wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed. Councilor Capano?
Yes, I was down at the business. I met the owner and the sign contractor. They want to replace the sign. They have a really old sign there with a brand new one, it's the same size, it's going to look really nice. So I want to make a motion to grant.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Discussion. Roll call.
Council Barton, absent. Council Capano?
Yes.
Yes. Council Chakutis, absent. Council Calucci?
Yes.
Yes. Council Seer?
Yes.
Yes. Council Field?
Yes.
Yes. Council Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes. Council Lozey?
Yes.
Yes. Council Net?
Yes.
Yes. Council Staubed?
Yes.
Yes. Council Walsh?
Yes.
Yes.
Before we move on to our next public hearing, I just want to say that Council Barton was not feeling well tonight. So I'm recuperating, and Diana Chakutis is on a well-deserved vacation. She's had a rough few months, so. Next public hearing.
Petition of Old World Remedies Inc., Alan Rothenberg, to open a medical marijuana dispensary at 953 Western Ave. from Monday through Saturday, 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor?
Mr. President, my name is Jim Smith. I'm the attorney for Old World Remedies. With me this evening is Alan Rothenberg, the CEO of our company and our sole investor. Next to Alan is, I know that part, Paul Ginsburg, who is our Director of Security. Paul has formerly acted as Director of Global Security for GE Healthcare, has background in the United States Department of, State Department for Diplomatic Security Division. He's been Director of Global Security for the Soros Fund. He has a very deep background in security. Next to Paul is our architect, Peter Quinn. Peter has designed three of the 23 dispensaries which are currently open in the Commonwealth. We have a sample of his work, it is outstanding. We think he's probably the best architect in this space in Massachusetts. He'll be coming to Lynn to do our project on Western Avenue. And lastly is Steve Chason. Steve is the former Director of Compliance at the Department of Public Health. He oversaw the approval and the reviews of all these applications at the Department of Public Health. He's gone in the private sector, we've engaged Steve as well to assist us. I've gotten the best team I could possibly get to work with us in Lynn. You know our history, we were here before. Last February, you granted us one of the two medical marijuana licenses in the Commonwealth, and we appreciate very much your support. Since that time, we've been meeting with a number of the councilors, and certainly the ward counselor. We've met with both the past and the current mayor. One fair question you might have is, why the delay? What took us so long? We were trying very hard to locate a cultivation, not just our retail, but a cultivation in the City of Lynn as well. Mr. Rothenberg really does want to invest in our city. His family has a long history here. You might recall Jerry's Store on Monroe Street, that's part of his family's legacy. Riches up on Highland Avenue, a number of retail areas in our neighborhood. He raised his children in Marblehead, and would like to give back very much to the City of Lynn. It took us a while to search for cultivation. We never really were successful. We had one parcel looked at very closely, the parcel had serious environmental problems. We have now secured a parcel in Grafton, Massachusetts, where we do our cultivating. We wish it was in Lynn, but it just wasn't possible. We are now about to move forward on that location, and we'll build out our cultivation beginning, frankly, very, very shortly. With me this evening, I brought our package, we filed it with you before. We have a copy of our registration as the Medical Marijuana Treatment Center from the Mass Department of Public Health, our so-called PCR. We have our premises floor plan, a description of our security measures, including our employee security policies, which has been approved by the Department of Public Health. We've met with the fire chief and with the police chief. We are very, very sensitive to the security issue in this, in this particular space. It's new to the Commonwealth, we recognize that. The Department of Public Health is very sensitive as well. That's why we went and we got, we think, the best security person available to us. We've reviewed, and we have filed a copy of our emergency procedures, that have also been approved by the Department of Public Health. A copy of our policies and procedures for patient or personal caregiver, as well as home delivery, which you have required in your zoning ordinance throughout the City of Lynn, we will certainly meet that. All of our policies and procedures for the transfer, acquisition, sale of marijuana, all approved by the Department of Public Health. Five and a half years ago, this Commonwealth voted to allow medical marijuana. Only 23 stores have opened in five and a half years. It's been a long, slow process, and we'd be obviously caught up in some of that tardiness. It takes a long time to open one of these stores. Our store is unique. We know the site is challenged, we have no, you know, quarrel with that. The issues of traffic flow on Western Avenue, I think most of us can recall when the GE probably had five times the number of employees it has today, and Western Avenue handled that. It will certainly handle our medical marijuana dispensary. There were no water quality issues, there were no water supply issues, there were no air quality or any other environmental issues at that location. We intend, however, to invest hundreds of thousands of dollars in that store. We want to improve us on our surrounding area, improve the character of that area, contribute toward six and to West Lynn. We want to make that facility something that we and you, the city, can be proud of. Section 7 of your ordinance requires a commitment to compassion, that those who can't afford our medicine be given that medicine. Mr. Rothenberg is all about compassion. I know a number of these 23 stores that have opened across the Commonwealth do not meet that commitment. We will meet it here in Lynn. If any of your constituents or any citizens of this city cannot afford medicine that they need, they will have it without cost. Now, we are in the middle of the, being regulated by the Department of Public Health, but also the Cannabis Control Commission, which was not in effect when I was last in front of you. There's also a regulator, and throughout the next few months, we'll assume oversight of our dispensary. We will agree to whatever the new regulations are, we will meet those regulations, you can stipulate that in this special permit. We are committed to opening and to meeting every regulation that the city has, as well as the two state oversight agencies. Now, the last dispensary to appear before you asked for and received permission to open seven days, our petition is asking for six. I would ask the council to consider giving us the same hours, the same opportunity as the dispensary on the Linway. Just in terms of being competitive and being fair, I would ask that, and again, that's not in our petition, but I would ask you to consider that. Our special permit, however, is fully consistent with the intent of the zoning ordinance. Obviously, we have good transportation. We have a very unique community host agreement. Let me close with this. In January of 2017, 15 months ago, I sent a copy of this, a draft, to the then mayor. It is still unsigned. What we agreed to do in that, in that community host agreement, which is something very unusual, is to give to the city all of our profits, to give to charity, all of our profits. We want to work with the mayor, with his council, and particularly with our ward counselor, in helping to direct that. Mr. Rothenberg has no desire to make money at this location. He's a great believer, and members of his family are users of this medicine, and we want to share it with the community. So while we don't yet have a host community agreement, we do want to, we want you to understand that we are not going to be a tough negotiating party. There is, however, a new state statute since I last appeared, which mandates that the community host agreement not exceed more than 3% of our gross sales. We will do that for the city, but as I say, every other, any other profit, and all the profits, will be returned to the charities and the city, and those which the city directs us to, including the city itself. That, with that, Mr. President, I conclude my presentation, and myself or any of the four gentlemen with me this evening are glad to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, please take a seat, and we'll continue the hearing. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor?
Calvin Anderson, 12 Concord Street. I know this property, and I would challenge anybody to find a more rundown parcel on Western Avenue. As a member of the Lynn Historical Commission, I'm also heartened, I just heard, that they're going to be adaptive reusing this property instead of tearing it down. It's an eyesore now, but it is challenging because it's a very narrow frontage, but deep. I, over the years and currently, have occasion to be a home hospice worker, volunteering for patients over time, because, you know, they pass. And I'm also asking for the same courtesy to the seven-day access, because it would be, as a caregiver, sometimes we have to go to CVS or a dispensary, and it seemed to be a double standard, that a dispensary would have to be closed on Sunday instead of seven-day access. So I'm just hoping that you'd put it in and extend the same courtesy. I also am just overwhelmed by the generosity of this man. So I'm for this, and I hope everybody else is too.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed. Councilor Capano?
Yes, so this location is one of the two locations that the city has chosen to locate the medical marijuana dispensary. I've met the owner, Mr. Rothenberg, and the attorney, and I believe, you know, as far as their commitments and their generosity, and I think they went through all the hoops, they've met everybody, you know, other councilors, fire chief, police chief, myself, a number of times. And, but there is one thing. The, when we, when this was decided, you know, a while back, the intention was that there would be a host agreement signed, and then both these locations would come back for a special permit. The host agreements, just neither one of them have been signed yet, so I just want to make the same motion I made on the Linway, that will grant the special permit with the stipulation that a host agreement be signed. Before it can go into effect.
Seconded. Roll call.
Council Barton, absent. Council Capano?
Yes.
Yes. Council Chakutis, absent. Council Calucci?
Yes.
Yes. Council Seer?
Yes.
Yes. Council Field?
Yes.
Yes. Council Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes. Council Lozey?
Yes.
Yes. Council Net?
Yes.
Yes. Council Staubed?
Yes.
Yes. Council Walsh?
Yes.
Yes.
Next public hearing.
Petition of Ming Hao Vo for a permit at 738-744 Western Ave. to allow retail shops at street level with two floors above street level as residential units and mixed use at street level in a business district.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor?
Mr. President, through you to the members of the council, I'm Attorney Sam Vitale. I'm here in behalf of the petitioner, Mr. Vo, who's seated over here. With me is the architect, Phil, and Bob, the contractor. We're here for your permission with respect to this property because the ordinance provides that in the business district, the special permit granting authority for residential use is the city council. If this proposal, which is a mix of residential and business units, were in the central business district where we are now, that would be permitted as a matter of right. But in the business district, a mixed use of commercial on the first floor and residential on the above floors requires city council consent, and that's what we're seeking from you tonight. For those of you who may know the site, it has been the home for many years of a seven-day all-alcohol restaurant facility, Sally's Pub. The petitioner proposes to close the bar, not have an alcohol license there, reduce the footprint of the commercial space by approximately 1,100 square feet, which achieves two things. It reduces the number of spaces needed for parking for business use, and increases the area adjoining for residential use. The mix would be eight residential units and two retail stores. The retail stores would have normal business hours, and obviously, the residences would be on the floors that are proposed above, on the second and third floor. We believe it would blend in with the character of that neighborhood, which is one where you have a commercial corridor, which is Route 107, Western Avenue, but in close proximity, a long-established neighborhoods, many of the persons who live in those neighborhoods utilize the businesses that are in that commercial corridor. So we think it's a good fit and a good proposal. The investment would be in excess of $1,500,000 with respect to the construction of the residential units and the removal of a portion of the commercial. We met with Councilor Capano, who had some concerns with respect to parking, and we think we addressed those. If the board, if the city council were to be favorably inclined, we would be required to go to the Board of Appeals. Because of the nature of the residential use, there are different dimensional requirements and different parking requirements for residential use than there are for the permitted and allowed commercial use. We would also have to go because of the nature of the project in adding more than 10 parking spaces to site plan review. So this is the first step, but only you can authorize the mixed use, and that's what we would seek tonight. I'd be glad to answer any questions that any member may have, and as I say, Mr. Brientz is the architect, Mr. Criticos, the architect, is here. Bob Gatter, the contractor, is here, and Min Bo, the proposed owner, is here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed. Anyone in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed. Councilor Capano?
Yes, I met with the owners and developer and the attorney, and, you know, I think it's a good project, it'll look really nice, and, you know, that area, you know, across from the market basket would look really nice if this, if this project were able to be done. There is an issue with parking, but I think they went out of their way to create some parking, you know, there's an underground parking with four cars, I believe, there's a total of 16, but still not enough, but we think that we, there's a good possibility that we may be able to get more parking, possibly next door. And so I'd like to be able to pursue that, and a way to do that is for them to have permission to leave the city council with, you know, granted, with the stipulation that they have to satisfy the Board of Appeals in site plan review as pertains to parking. So I'd like to make that motion to grant with those stipulations.
Second. Okay, motion made, seconded, discussion. Council Staubed?
What are the number of bedrooms? All two bedrooms? Yes, thank you.
If I may ask a question from the podium, it's actually for the attorney Lamanna. So you said 16 parking spots is what they have?
16, right now.
Is that what they need for this spot?
I have not seen the plans. If it's inadequate, they would have to go to the zoning board of appeals, the neighbors would have notice, and they would need a variance.
I still didn't hear some...
Too short.
Too short. They need two more spaces, which I think we're going to be able to get.
Okay. Thank you.
That, so that's why, if we can move it to the Board of Appeals, by that time, we'll know whether we have the extra spots or not, you know, and can deal with it there.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Council Barton, absent. Council Capano?
Yes.
Yes. Council Chakutis, absent. Council Calucci?
Yes.
Yes. Council Seer?
Yes.
Yes. Council Field?
Yes.
Yes. Council Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes. Council Lozey?
Yes.
Yes. Council Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Staubid?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Next public hearing.
Public hearing regarding amending the zone ordinance to establish a medical village overlay district on all of the land lying between and bounded by Dartmouth Street, Anchor Road, Linfield Street, and Woodland North.
Okay. I understand that you have a PowerPoint. So we're going to allow the PowerPoint before we start asking anybody to come up who's in favor or in opposition.
So, good evening. I'm Mary Jo Gagnon. I'm one of the senior vice presidents at North Shore Medical Center. So we just thought before there was any discussion on the medical overlay district, that we'd just give you a little background on what we're looking to do. This is on the site of the current Union Hospital. So we thought we'd give you the background and then some renderings of what we're proposing for the site. Thank you. I was going to hide behind the flowers. So, okay, so. Just to get started, I think people all are aware of the fact that it was announced in 2015 that we would be consolidating the Union and the Salem campus. The plan was to keep the high-volume outpatient services that are very important to the community. We want to keep that inland for the local residents. And we did note that there would be an ongoing effort to make sure we met the emergent and urgent care needs of the city of Lynn as well by the time the hospital's consolidated in 2019. So we set up a planning group in 2016, and it included the federal, state, and city-elected officials, as well as administrators from Partners and North Shore Medical Center and the clinical leaders from the EDs, for example. We involved the regional and Lynn EMS coordinators, the Lynn Health Task Force, and the Lynn Community Health Center in those meetings as well. And we met over about a year and a half. And the themes of the meeting were post-consolidation, when we have the one campus at Salem Hospital, and needed to leave services inland in addition to the outpatient. We wanted to make sure that we would meet the emergent and urgent care needs of the greater Lynn community. We would be considerate of the way health care will be delivered in the future. I'm sure you're all aware how things are shifting from an inpatient setting to the outpatient settings. And then we also made a point to note that we had to be clinically and financially sustainable in order to ensure that we would be here for the long haul. We didn't want to open something that would end up not being financially viable. So we just thought this slide might help. When people think of a hospital, I think the first thing people think of are maybe the emergency room and being an inpatient. But when you look at the data, it's actually, you can see the majority of the volume is actually outpatient. It's radiology, testing lab. Think of how often you've gone to the hospital. You've probably all gone and had lab work or an x-ray, but maybe not all been an inpatient. The next biggest area is the primary care visits for your, you know, your primary care physicians, and then the ED non-emergent visits. And again, the non-emergent, a lot of people, you may have read about this, and this is not just at Union, in most emergency rooms, a good percentage of the volume could be seen in an urgent care center. So those are the less acute. You know, you have a fever, or you've sliced your thumb while you're cooking, or doing renovations or something. And so, but you go to the emergency room, when in fact, of the 23,000 visits at the Lynn campus, about 14,000 fit into the category that would be considered non-emergent. And then the NSPG specialty practices, again, some limited primary care, if you get referred to a rheumatologist or cardiologist, those visits are all on the outpatient side as well. And then we have a behavioral health program here at the Hartman Hall, and that sees about 10,000 visits. So the good news is the majority of all these services below the line are actually going to be staying in what we'll propose as the medical village. The things that'll be moving to the Salem campus are the ED, the true emergent cases. And the example that people always say is, oh, if I have a heart attack, I won't have a hospital. But for years, if you've had a heart attack, we've been bringing you to the Salem Hospital because that's where the cath lab is. So that has been going on, and that's where you want to be. You don't want to go to one hospital and then get transferred to another that has the cath lab. And then, obviously, the inpatient stays. Whoops, sorry. The inpatient visits are going to be moving to Salem. But we hope that that gives people a comfort level that the majority of the volume will be staying here. So as I said, the big volume uses of the primary care lab, et cetera, currently, they're in about 27,000 square feet on the Lynn campus. But they're spread out in three separate buildings, and they're pretty old. You've been in any of them. The West MOB, Hartman Hall, and then throughout the Union campus is where all these services are provided. So in order to address those needs and keep all those services in the city, we're terming it a medical village. And this was the conceptual design that we worked through with the group, the team that worked on this. So obviously, you've got your primary care physicians, the behavioral health that's existing here today will move into this building, the specialty services, your referrals to your cardiologists, rheumatologists, et cetera, the urgent care that we talked about, the 14,000, and then all your support services. If you come here weekly now for lab work or monthly, you can still come to the Lynn campus for that. And there'll be x-ray, there'll be mammography, and all the services, you know, that people are used to getting here. The good news is, as of now, it's about 40,000 square feet. We originally thought it would be closer to 35,000 to 37,000, but we really want to do, you know, have a lot of the support areas and do a nice job. So we're currently at the 40,000 mark for the building alone. So where we're proposing, this is just an overview of the campus today. This is the Linfield Street side, obviously. This is the current hospital, the main entrance here. This is Hartman Hall that I talked about. Where the behi-
The cursor doesn't show up on this.
Oh, it isn't? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. I'm sorry. So obviously, Linfield Street is here. This is the main entrance to the hospital. And then in the back is the south wing. And then this is Hartman Hall, and East MOB here, we have one physician here. And then the North Shore Physicians Group is in the West Medical Office Building. And then this is right next to the emergency room. So in order to get this built at the same time that we consolidated the campuses, we obviously wanted to keep the emergency room functioning as well as NSPG. So this became the area that made the most sense because we wouldn't have to knock any of the existing buildings down. And we could just, these are very old buildings, and we could knock those down and then start the building here. So that is where we're proposing. And you can see on this site, this is our entire property. It's about 20 acres. There's about 10 acres on the north side of Woodland Ave. And then this is about 10 acres on the Linfield Street side. So this is, again, where we were proposing to take down the two, East MOB and Hartman Hall, and build it there. As we've gotten on with the planning, it's actually, we've shifted this a little bit here because it made for much better circulation for patients. We'll be using these existing curb cuts, and that will allow patients to come in and not have to just, in the previous slide, it was over here a little more. And then we're also now proposing to take down West MOB, once we move all the North Shore Physician Practices here, and that will allow for increased parking because that was one of the things people were concerned about, parking. So that is the future plan. Obviously, we can't take down West MOB until I move them into that building. So this is just the latest rendering of the building, which we thought would look pretty nice on Linfield Street. There'd be an entrance for the lab work and radiology, and also, there's an elevator right here that would bring you upstairs to the primary care offices, as well as specialty offices. And then over here would be a separate entrance for urgent care, so that we clearly marked where urgent care is, and again, we have plenty of parking. We've also designed it such that if you walk into the wrong entrance, you can certainly get through to the other side. You don't have to go back outside. So that's kind of the latest rendering. And that's from the Linfield Street side, and this would be from approaching, it's still Linfield Street, but obviously, the corner here. So this is what it would look like on the side from, it's still Linfield Street, but you get the idea. So this is the urgent care area here. And there's lots of light and sunlight, which would be nice. Those are the waiting rooms that were on the front of the building. So in terms of the next step in the spring, which we're in now, we're looking tonight to get the rezone, rezoning of the acreage for the medical village. We are also working with the city to, and they're going to hire a master planner for the remaining of the development. We want to send out an RFP, a request for proposal. We need about five to six acres for our medical village, so that leaves about 14 to 15 acres. So we want to send out a request for proposal to developers. The city has asked to work with a master planner so they get a sense, right now, it's zoned for residential, so they want to work and see what else they could come up with, make sure, work with the neighbors and meet with the neighborhoods, and come up with a plan. And then, while they're doing that, we're going to complete the design and the permitting process for the medical village. In the summer, we're hoping to have everything completed. We will take down the East MOB and Hartman Hall, and then we're really hoping to start construction by September. The, jumping ahead a year, that's when we plan to open, probably mid-October in 2019, we'd relocate NSPG physicians out of the West MOB, and then we would raise that building and complete the parking. And we'd relocate behavioral health. You noticed if, that we're knocking down Hartman Hall initially. So while we do that, we will move the behavioral health program into available space in the campus proper. That allows us to take the building down, so then we'll move behavioral health out of the hospital into the new building. We'll open urgent care and the ancillary services, and then the high-acuity emergency services, as well as the inpatient volume, and the PD site and the geriatric site programs would be moved over to the Salem campus. So that's really all we have. We just thought it might help to have you get a little of the background. So, I don't know if we want to have questions or want me to leave any part of this up.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor?
Is John Hennessy, 62 Robinson Street, life long, Lynn? I think this is a step in the right direction to be, for Lynn to become a world-class city. We have a lot of things on the waterfront that are going to be going and everything. And I really think we need an urgent care center so that people stop going to the emergency room and driving insurance up for fevers, stitches, and things like that. Getting older, I'm looking at when I retire, having to get health insurance and stuff, and I just think this is a great idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor?
Calvin Anderson, 12 Concord Street. I guess now that we're faced with this, it's either yea or nay, because they've effectively manipulated everything. Hey, let's get the sellout from the Mass Board of Medicine or whatever. But, you know, I just want to say, of course, I'm in favor of this because we're going to lose the hospital. And I don't want anybody to ever let these people get away with thinking that people don't know. That spiffy little PowerPoint presentation that they didn't even rehearse before they came to our venue. That pyramid they had is a crock because they show how everything changed over the years.
Calvin, this is to speak in favor if you're opposed.
I'm in favor of this, but I just don't want anybody to forget that those, that pyramid was forced over many years as this hospital winnowed away at the services so they could manipulate the standards and stats. Of course, X percent don't seek this service there because they have to schlep up to Salem. So I don't want anybody to ever think that there's a lot of people in our city and in several cities around in Linfield that doesn't hate Partners Corporation's guts. And they're going to get away with it, and they're going to keep doing it. And I'm glad I'm old and I'm going and I'm not coming. But I changed my primary care to Leahy, and I expect everybody with any compassion to maybe follow me and go over there. Let's bankrupt them.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
Michael Toomey, 93 Judge Roe. And I have to say, at this point, I'm not 100% sure that I'm in opposition. I can relate to what Calvin had to say. We are without a hospital, and that makes me very sad. But we were, I thought Partners had a commitment to create emergency care at that site, and what they're proposing and what I see before us is not 24-hour-a-day emergency care. And when you have drugstores that are open 24 hours a day, and you're going to have an emergency care facility that shuts down at 8:00, that, to me, is not emergency care. That said, what's before you now, I would say, my question would be, is what we're going to end up with, with this change in zoning, better for the city and better for control of what goes on at that site? Or is the present circumstance where they are operating under a special permit, they're not going to operate a hospital, I don't know what's going to happen at the site, but they are not going to be operating a hospital, apparently? That's what they got the special permit for. And does changing the zoning give this group and the residents of Lynn more control over what goes on at that site? Or does leaving the circumstance as it is and having them have to come for a special permit for everything they want to do at that site? Because the site is zoned, single-family residences, excuse me, and this board owes it to the neighbors to afford them the protection that goes with being in a single-family residential neighborhood. The board back then saw the need for a hospital, and I agree 100% with that decision back then. And I think the decision that you have to make is whether what is being proposed is better for the city of Lynn and the neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone else seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed? Counselor Lozey.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think, I'm going to make a motion to approve this, and then I have a few comments, so.
A motion has been made to approve? Seconded. Seconded.
And I do have an amendment I'd like to add to it. Under Section 3, the last sentence would include in-house patient pharmacy and other ancillary medical services with a minimum lot size of 30,000 square feet. I would make a motion that, on this amendment first.
A motion has been made for an amendment?
Second.
Seconded, discussion? We need a roll call on that amendment?
Yes.
Okay. Roll call on that amendment.
Counselor Barton, absent, Counselor Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Chakutas, absent, Counselor Calucci?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Field?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Staubid?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes.
And, Mr. President, on the main motion, I'm in favor of this as an, the only alternative. We're looking at a hospital that's closing. My first preference, as it is with, I think, everybody else, we'd love to see the hospital stay. It's not happening, and they're proposing to build a medical village that, not as good as a hospital, but it certainly will provide needed medical services, modern medical services, and state-of-the-art health services. So I am in favor of this, and I hope that we'll move forward on this.
Any other discussion? Counselor Staubid?
Thank you, Mr. President. Two questions. One, what would the operating hours be of the urgent care facility?
We really haven't nailed that down yet, so I think to the other gentleman's request, we're looking at what that would, hours would best meet the needs of the community. So right now, we're thinking, you know, maybe eight to eight, but if it's, this will later.
Okay. And my other question is, if we zone this in this manner, that whole block, and really, the main part of the building, the majority, the main building, actually, would not be used in your future plans, but you have it available for sale, but it would have to fall within the medical zoning of that property. What do you envision going into the main hospital building?
Well, that's why I think the city had requested to look with, work with the city planner, to see what could go there. Because we don't have, we're only looking to keep the, where the medical village is, and then we'll be selling the remaining if somebody wanted a hospital. People have said, you know, assisted living or nursing home. I have no idea. So it really depends on what the city and the neighbors are interested in, as well as what a developer will come and be interested in building.
Should then we be better off waiting to see what that vision is before locking ourselves into zoning that property as one thing?
Attorney Lamanna, would you please explain the reason and the process?
Yes, there is a consensus of agreement here of a medical village, given the choices that we have at this time. So the only two things that are allowed as a matter of right at that site would be single-family homes and a medical village. The master plan will put together other alternatives for this counsel to consider, along with speaking with the neighbors.
If I could add to that, too, this process has been going on for over three years. I got involved in it about a year and a half ago. The mayor, state reps, as well as Counselor Lozey, has been sitting down with partners and have gone to many neighborhood meetings. And the last thing anybody wants to see in the city of Lynn, from City Hall or State House, is Lynn Hospital, Union Hospital closed. But there's not a lot of options for us, so we've been trying to work something out with partners in the sense that we want to get the neighborhood including, included in what goes on up there so that they can feel as though they're a part of it. I get the single-family thing, but the, it's not a good location for a school. The state wouldn't allow us to do that. We'd have to take the land eminent domain, which would cost a lot more money than what the city has because we don't get that money back from the state. The consensus is, in the meetings that we've had, is that some commercial space and residential there at that location, it doesn't, I'm not saying it can't happen, but it doesn't make sense for single-family homes to go on the Linfield side of it. In the back, that's a completely different. In the back, that's a completely different story. And that's what this whole process is. Partners, as Counselor Lozey's gonna do in a little while, is willing to put some money up so we can come up with a master plan. And the amount of money is far greater percentage-wise than the money that we have for the Linway Master Plan. So, Partners has been making a real effort and working with the city. I get, nobody in Lynn wants to see the hospital go. It's unfortunate. It's gonna happen and I hate saying that. And two years ago, I felt the same way as Calvin did and a lot of people that live up on Watt One, but we are trying to do and work something out that is in the best interest of not only the city of Lynn, but the residents who live up there. So, anyone else have any thing they wanna add?
Again, my, my concern, Mr. President, is that if, if we zone this in this fashion that, again, it's the majority of the building, 30,000 square foot, over two floors of an urgent care and some medical offices, really not a lot of medical space. The vast majority of that space will be encompassed by the existing building. And if we zone it this way, and, and this may be a question for Attorney Lamanna, but could they then open by right a type of medical facility that maybe the neighborhood would not be in favor of?
Think you'd do that now, but I'll let, uh, Attorney Lamanna answer that.
Yes, that's correct. Under the Dover Amendment, which allows educational uses, a sober house, a drug, uh, drug assistance facility could open up as a matter of right. There's nothing you could do, uh, from a zoning standpoint to stop that. The goal, I think, is to find other uses that is attractive.
And that's what we're doing now.
The master plan mixed you.
Without doing, that, that's what would probably go there is what you're saying.
But right now, for that to go in there would require a special permit?
No. Not at all.
Going as a matter of right.
So, regardless of how we vote this tonight, would be a matter of right?
It could electe strike bowling alley. The council had no say in, in that. It was an educational use, closed as a bowling alley. Correct. That citywide, not adjusted to the site. There's no way to protect through zoning amendments to prevent that.
In a lot of ways, it's good faith with Partners, still working with the city as well as the city working with Partners, trying to prevent that from happening.
Well, good faith is generally built over time.
I, I, I get it.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor Walsh.
Would, could we amend it now for a 24-hour urgent care facility? Could we put the hours on it now?
Stipulation.
A stipulation?
Again, that's a question for Counselor Lam- Attorney Lamanna.
This, this is not a special permit application, it's a zoning change, so that, uh, this would allow them to go in as a matter of right if, uh, so that that would not be an appropriate amendment, uh, to a zoning change, hours of operation.
I think we all would like to see them stay open 24 hours. We're hoping Partners will listen to us, say that. Counselor Field?
Just to touch on that, is it Partners that decides the hours or is it gonna be dictated by the state? The urgent care.
Hi, everybody. I'm David Roberts.
Doctor, could you please approach the podium, doctor?
So, I'm David Roberts. I'm the CEO of North Shore Medical Center. The, the hours of urgent care, which are, there's maybe 40,000 urgent care centers in the country, are all fairly uniform mainly because after certain hours, people don't tend to go to urgent care. After 10 or 11 o'clock at night, if you have a minor complaint, what you generally do is go to bed and then go, go the next day. So, most urgent cares find that if you stay open later than that, you're fully open, you're fully staffed, nobody's using it, and it becomes a really expensive way of delivering care. And one of our principles is we gotta figure out a model of care that we can sustain over long periods of time. So, if, if the demand is there, we'll stay open. But I can just tell you that there's 30,000 of these in the country and almost all of them close between 8:00 and 10:00 because that's when people stop coming to the door. People at, at midnight, if they have a, a medical issue, usually to get them out of bed, it's pretty serious. And so, you don't wanna go to urgent care at midnight. You wanna go to a, a full-fledged emergency room because if you're that concerned at 1:00 in the morning, it's maybe because there's something really going on and you wanna be at a full-fledged emergency room. So, it, that's really the issue of what drives urgent care hours.
Again, the question was, is it Partners' decision or is it the state's decision on the hours of the operation for urgent care?
Yeah, so the state doesn't mandate hours of, of urgent care. That's, that's, that's really our decision about what's a reasonable way to provide care that's not irrational or running up costs that we have to then make up in another situation, you know? We, so, so that's, it's, it's in our control.
So, Counselor Walsh?
So, the, the hours seem to, to be consistent across the board. What about days of the week operation? Is this supposed to be a seven-day or, or a five-day operation?
That's seven days, we're hoping, yeah.
Hoping or can we, can we have that in the amendment as seven days?
And again, it's, I don't think this, I'm not a lawyer, but I don't think this is the place to commit to hours in a, in a zoning change situation. You know, again, you know, this is 20, this is $24.7 million we're committing to the city of Lynn. This, it's an important concept that if, if there's lots of folks that wanna come to urgent care and use this facility, we wanna be open for them. Because if they don't come to this urgent care, then they go to the emergency room at Salem and then it gets wildly busy and then everybody has to wait. So, if we have demand for this service, which I think we will, we're gonna be open to meet that demand because the alternative of having them go elsewhere is not good care. So, I, you know, I will commit to that, that we, that we will stay open, the hours where the people of Lynn say we need you.
If, if I can just ask, the only urgent cares that I know about are in swamps. They're always what you're saying now or?
Yeah, the other, the other one, we, we run the urgent care in Danvers at the MGH Amortory Center in Danvers. We run that center. Generally, they, I think most days, we, they close at 8:00, somewhere between 8:00 and 10:00. And that's when it just tapers off and they just, they don't find the, the demand after that for the reasons I said. But we, we run that urgent care now.
At what time does it open?
I think it opens at 8:00, 8:00 in the morning. So, it's 12 hours a day, seven days a week.
Are there any other questions? Counselor Capano?
I, I don't wanna keep repeating what most of us have been saying for years and years. No one wants to see the hospital close. I, I remember, uh, fighting Lynn Hospital when it closed, you know? Spent a couple of years, you know, you know, working with Partners and, uh, the Lynn Healthcare Task Force years ago, uh, you know, the same, picking up the pieces, you know, the crumbs that fall off the table. You know, when they deregulated the hospitals in the 1990s, this is what happened. You know, patients, they're not patients anymore, they're customers. And we're dealing with that and there's big problems in, in the health insurance industry, big problems with, with the hospitals, you know, consolidating, merging, merging, closing the smaller hospitals. I mean, we don't like it. We gotta continue to fight it. But, you know, I, I think that Counselor Lozey, the counsel president, you know, the mayor, people have worked really hard to try and get what you can out of a bad situation. I think if you didn't vote for this, you, it's sort of like cutting off your nose to spite your face, you know? You know, we're losing the battle. And not, not us here, but everywhere. You know, people have to recognize, you know, on a larger scale that, you know, what's happening with health insurance and the healthcare industry is wrong. You know, it's a race to the bottom and people need to realize that. And when they talk about deregulation for other industries, the same thing happens. So, you know, I don't wanna get off on a, a, a long thing here, but I think, you know, it would be wise to take what we can get. I know that people have worked really hard on this to try and make the most out of a bad situation.
I, I just would like to say, I, I've worked as a doctor in this town for 33 years. I started at Old Lynn Hospital, so I was part of closing that. And it breaks my heart to close Union Hospital. I've been attending there for 30 years. But most of what's driving this is it, running two acute care hospitals five miles apart and investing in both of them in state-of-the-art CT, MR, surgery, GI, Endocrine, cath labs, ORs, upgrading them every year to stay current. Two hospitals, each of which are at 65% occupancy, five miles apart, was not a sustainable way to provide healthcare to an area of, you know, 10, 15 miles. That's what we ran into. I've worked in all three of these hospitals my whole career and we've, you finally had to make a decision. Okay, who gets the MR? You can't buy, you can't buy two of them. And then you start ending up realizing that when you're in the hospital nowadays, you're really, really sick and not like when I started 32 years ago. You could be in the hospital for almost nothing and spend two weeks desperately sick. You need onsite hospitalist, intensivist, you need a surgeon who's, it's hard to mimic that in two hospitals. I have tried in 33 years. And it, and so what this plan is, is consolidating the inpatient. The other thing, too, when I started, there was 300 beds, 250 beds, 300 beds. There were 700 hospital beds in the, in five square miles. We're down to 200 now, sort of total medical beds in our geography. And again, it's hard to run multiple sites with low census and the need for the technological support and the physicians to be on call in multiple hospitals all the time. That's really what drove this decision. Uh, and, you know, I, I've, I've been in the middle of the night in all three of these hospitals for 30 years and watched this process take place. So, I've lived this.
Counselor Capano?
I don't wanna debate, you know, rehash the old debate about, about the, the need for the hospitals. I mean, we had, I mean, where I live, I mean, we lost a hospital when we li- lost Lynn Hospital, closer to Mass General than Union or Salem, probably, where I live in Lynn. So, I don't wanna debate that. We had less people, we had more hospitals. People need care. It's hard, hard to afford it, you know? So, I don't, I wanna really rehash that.
So, I just really wanna argue, make the statement that we're gonna take care, I know there's people that don't agree with me, but we're gonna take care of the vast majority of the medical needs of the people of our community. Because the number of people that actually need to be hospitalized has gone from 700 to 200 over the last 25 years. So, we are gonna provide great care for the vast majority of the needs of the people that we've been taking care of for 35 years I've been here.
I just, I just see this continuing until something major changes because I don't, you know, I'm just waiting for the day, a year, two years from now, when sa- the same thing will happen in Salem. I went, Lynn's closed, Union's closed, Salem's closed, they want one big hospital somewhere. I mean, you, you can't continue to, to profit, you know, from the hospitals by cutting. At some point, there has to be something that happens where people could afford, you know, could afford care. I mean, you know, if you have one hospital in Boston somewhere and the rest of them are closed, if that's the way you have to make money, there's something wrong with the healthcare industry.
You and I completely agree. We completely agree on that, for sure. We, we, we agree. I agree with you completely on that.
Anyone else have a question? Counselor Starbitt?
Sorry, Mr. President, but, and I'm not arguing that the hospital fight, I, I know that's over, but I also don't wanna sit here and, and trade off one zoning for a zoning that may be detrimental to the rest of the neighborhood and that live in those single-family, in that single-family neighborhood. Such as, in order for us, the only way for us to maintain an urgent care facility is to possibly trade off to give the larger part of that, that campus, the main hospital building, the area's largest substance abuse center, psych center and, and everything else, in an area that's, that's in a single-family neighborhood. So, could we be reasonably assured that that's not going to happen in that part of the building? And that's really my concern as to...
So, you, you remember, we've been down this road, right? You know, we were down this road, that original idea about Union was to use it as a, a regional psychiatric hospital for the partner system. And the neighbors said no, and that was that. Do you think we're gonna refight that again?
Well, if we give it a medical zoning within that, the parameters of those four streets, it could be by right.
The, the whole idea of the master planner is that we're contributing money for a plan to be put in place to find acceptable uses of this space from the neighbors. And that will be sort of the opening parameters for anybody proposing to use this space because the, the city's already weighed in on what's a reasonable use. That's, that's how the sequence is going.
So, it would not be used for a purpose that is opposed by the neighbors?
That's the whole idea of the master plan, is that we would do this together.
I'm not sure that...
Counselor, they have a right to do that right now without us even voting on this? They have a right to, to do exactly what you are fearful of. Whether we realize it or the neighborhood realizes it, that's why we're, we've been talking with Partners. Counselor Lozey?
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate your concern, Counselor Starbitt. And as Dr. Johnson mentioned, we did go over this in the past and the neighbors made it very clear that we don't want a psych hospital at that location. And the idea of a master plan, it will allow the community to sort out the reuse of the remaining portion of this site. What type of reuse? Senior housing, residential, mixed commercial, residential? It would allow the community to have a vision of what to do and then, at the same time, as elected officials would send a message to any potential developer, we'll bend over backwards if you do what we've worked out through public meetings, neighborhood meetings. The master plan, we, we hire an architect, engineer, who comes up with all the various alternatives, explanations of what-ifs and, uh, I, I envision a, a well-done plan that covers all the bases. And I think this is what we need. We need a vision for what we're gonna do with this parcel. If we start to begin, if we're, if we're gonna turn this down over the fear of what might happen, we could potentially, Partners could turn around and they're not gonna build the medical village. They're gonna just let whatever happens. And as Counselor Seer, President Seer pointed out, you could have a, a drug alcohol rehab hospital.
It could be the worst-case scenario is what it could be.
Yeah, and we, nobody in this community wants that. And so, we're doing everything we can to make sure that what ends up there is what the majority of the community wants to see. And it hopefully will be a very nice, uh, whatever it comes out to, whether it's commercials, school, elderly, senior, residential strictly, whatever that vision is, that it comes out to be a, a beautiful reuse of what's there, along with a, a first-class medical village. So, with that, Mr. President, I do wanna ask Attorney Lamanna a question. Uh, this vote to rezone, does it require a majority vote?
Quite eight votes.
Eight votes. So, so we're down to nine here. So, that means if we lose two votes on this, this gets denied, is that, um, can they, well, you know, this thing could just go away. I don't know what Partners would do, but we could lose the medical village and then have an abandoned hospital.
Counselor Starbitt?
Counselor Lozey, I, I appreciate all that you've said and I, I didn't say that I was voting against it. I'm just trying to limit the neighborhood's exposure. And, you know, what you said all sounds great, but it's still, if we approve this tonight as a medical village, they could still put, regardless of what the neighbors say, that would still fit within the use.
But we just said, Counselor, they can whether we do or not.
Right. So, say the neighbors play a role, but at the end of the day, by right, those things could go in whether we say yes or no.
Oh, what Partners is doing, Counselor, is they're actually giving the city money to create a plan. So, they, they wanna work... So they, they want to work with the city and the neighborhood in order to see what has developed and goes there. They're not just, you know, putting the land up for sale, which is what they can do, and they can sell it to whoever they want. And it could be one of those rehab centers that you're talking about, or it could be a developer with real deep pockets who wants to build a 50-story high-rise there and take us into court, and, and we don't have the money to beat them and, and stay out of there. So a lot of, a lot of work has gone into this over the years.
Can I just make one more point that just, you may not know this, but the rehab of the Salem campus is going to include 120-bed psych hospital. That's going to be co-managed by Mass General and us. So the big psych hospital that we were going to build at Union, we've, we're almost done building at Salem, and that will have substance abuse and, and sort of the, some of the things you're worried about coming to Lynn, we've already spent $200 million building it at Salem. So I, I think, I think you can take that off the list of things to worry about because we built it and it's in Salem. So does that reassure you that we wouldn't do the same thing on this campus that we just spent $200 million doing on the Salem campus? So that, I think that should give you a little solace.
Thank you, Dr. Counsel, up here.
Thank you, Mr. President. So just a question around, I'm inclined to support, because I know this has been almost five years, I think, in the fall of 13, we heard rumblings. So it's been quite a long, and I won't beat the dead horse, the proverbial dead horse. We all know we have put up the fight. And I'm trying to wrap my head around the concept of the medical village, which I, it doesn't go, it's not light on me that their partners is investing the $24.7 million. I guess my question would be to Attorney Lamanna, because it's a zoning approval and it takes the eight votes, will we have, will we be able to see what would go there post all of the neighborhood meetings and interaction with the plan? And will it ever get back to this body for a final say if we vote for the zoning change this evening?
Not for the medical village itself, that would...
No, not for that. I understand that, for the main campus.
Well, after the, the...
Do with that.
After the master plan is completed, I would strongly recommend that the council retain special permit authority. So they may be, neighbors may want a lot, not want a laundromat, but they may want a bakery. So that's a way that the council...
Still has to come before this council.
Correct.
So part A is more the medical village to occur, and then the B piece will be with this master input city planner, and I want to know more about that, the master plan, so to speak, with the neighborhood involvement, and what comes up with the collectively would report back to this council.
And the council would have to make further zone changes. And if the will is just single family, just single family will go there. I would think though, if you went out to bid, single family financially probably does not work. And if you don't have some type of mixed use, you're more likely to have a Dover Amendment use going in there.
Education.
Because there is a cost to tear down the building. And a, a single-family developer would count how many homes they could put on there with 10,000 square feet, required large size. And it may be that the only financially viable offers that partner was, would get with the RFP would be with a Dover Amendment-type use, and in all likelihood, nonprofit, tax-free.
I appreciate, in particular, Mr. Toomey's comments, because what we are charged with this evening is the unenviable task of where we're going to go and what we need to do with the best interests of the neighborhood and the city in mind. And I do appreciate Mike's comments on that. I do take that to heart. So I am going to support, knowing that it will come back to us at a later date. Thank you.
Counsel Field.
Has it been any decision on the back lot as far as zoning? The zoning that's been presented has just been the circumference of the main campus, but not the back lot. I know there's been a lot of questions from the residents in that area as far as the proposal...
Counsel Lozey, answer that.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm pretty sure from any discussions or, or conversations I've had, that the back lot that you're referring to would probably be strictly single-family residential. That seems to fit in with the continuity of that particular neighborhood. I think the, the debate or question is the reuse of the Lynnfield Street portion of it from Woodland to Lynnfield Street. And I think that's where the master plan will be invaluable in helping us as a community to come up with an idea, the best use of it. I do have a question for Dr. Roberts, if, if he could. What kind of, I know you can't give an assurance to the city what partners will do with the remaining parcel, how they'll sell it out. Is there something you can give us as to, when we're through with the process of this master plan, and let's say hypothetically, we come up with a, after several community meetings, neighborhood meetings, we decide on, well, we'd like to see single families across from Woodland, what, what can you do to help facilitate the wishes of the community?
I mean, at the end of the day, you have to find a developer who's willing to do it, right? I mean, so this will be, go out to RFP, if, if, if the master plan says, this is what the city would like, and we do an RFP and nobody answers it, because they do the math, they say, I can't make any dough on that plan, so not doing it. So then what do we do? What do we do at that point? You guys probably know more about this process than I do. But if you say, this is what we want, and nobody will build it, then what kind of man stands still? Excuse me, I'm choking to death. Then I suppose at that point, you have to expand it. No, no, that's okay. So, right, is that the, I mean, that's the answer, right? If you, if you restrict it and nobody wants to build it, okay, then what do you do? So I, I'm hoping that that's not what happens, but, and, and then you probably go out and expand the RFP, and then someone does a proposal, and you go back to the neighbors and say, this isn't exactly what you outlined in the first place, but is this acceptable, yes or no? And then it'd probably be a negotiation, say it'd be acceptable if you did X, and then you go back to the developer. At the end of the day, they have to have a margin, right, to, to do the work? So I, so I, I don't know what the developer is going to do in response to the master plan, because I don't know what the master plan says. We have, we have to wait on that. You know, I, I will say this, you know, I've been in this job for a year, and one of my main jobs was to try to solely rebuild the trust between North Shore Medical Center and the City of Lynn, and I spent a lot of time doing that. I have a fair amount of credibility with a fair number of the citizens who I've put stents in, so at least I have a small constituency. And the last thing that I would do as President North Shore is to, is to endorse a plan that, that wasn't embraced by the neighbors. I mean, why would I do that after so much effort to try to rebuild the trust that I know was lost? I, I know that. So I can't promise anything more than, I, you know, I, I won't endorse a plan that the neighbors don't think is a great addition to the neighborhood.
That's important. Thank you, Dr. Roberts.
And, and, you know, that's, that's all I really could say. I would break my heart to have to advance a plan that, that broke all the work that we've done, worked so hard for, for the last year.
Counsel Annett.
I just want to add the question to Counsel Lozey. Dr. Roberts, I know if I understand correctly, the partners are, North Shore Medical Center can change their mind anytime, even those we, we pass this or not pass those, you can change your mind. So any way you can assure us that if this goes through, that's make sure that you won't change your mind, because Counsel Lozey and many people have tried so hard to work this out, just make sure that you, you not change your minds and, and leave us, and, and we don't know what to do with it. Any, any way you assure us that?
Yeah, yes, I can assure you that. I'll, right. We've worked really hard on this, we've spent a lot of time together, we've, we've put the money into our budget, we've budgeted to build this, we're on our way. I can't imagine any circumstance where we would not move forward with this. I, I think this is going to be fantastic, I'm really excited about it. So, no, I cannot imagine a circumstance where we would reneging our commitment to build this medical village in, in Lynn.
Yes, I wanted to be here, thank you.
I'd like to call for the vote, Mr. President.
Motion made for a vote.
Second.
Seconded, roll call.
Counsel Barton Absinthe, Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudas Absinthe, Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field?
Yes.
Yes.
Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Annett?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Starbitt?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. President, could I just ask on that vote, if they could make the PowerPoint available to our secretary so we could have access to it to share?
Thank you.
Thank you. Public hearings to be set down.
Petition of Patrick J. McGrath to construct a four-story, 24-unit residential apartment building on properties owned in a business district at 693 Western Ave.
Motion made.
Second.
All those in favor? Committees, educational and environmental, Counselor Fields.
Thank you, Mr. President. It was an honor to stand in for Counselor Chakoudas while she was away. We had one presentation from OFO Dockless Bike Sharing Service. We unanimously approved their proposal with the same recommendation from the last bike sharing company, with a four-month trial period from June, July, August, and September, and to report back to the council of their trial period at the end of September. And we recommend the council for approval. Motion for...
Motion made to accept.
Second.
Seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Ways and Means, Counsel Annett.
Mr. President, the committee voted unanimously to approve, make a motion to accept.
Second.
Clerk, read all the transfers.
Order that the city comptroller be and is hereby authorized to appropriate from free cash the sum of $990,000 to the Lynn Fire Department payroll. Transfer the sum of $65,000 from the account of excess worker comp expense to the account of law expense to fund FY18 legal settlement. Order that the city comptroller be and is hereby authorized to take the following action. Certify as an available fund the amount of $20,360 is allotted to the City of Lynn School Department for the Lynn Health Tech Career Pathway Training Program provided by the Red Cross and Career Center. Motion to set down a public hearing on whether the city should bond $5,882,193 for the purpose of paying for the costs to make roof, window, and door repairs to the Hood Elementary School.
Motion made to accept.
Second.
Seconded, discussion, roll call.
Counsel Barton Absinthe, Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudas Absinthe, Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Annett?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Starbitt?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Is there an emergency?
Yeah, they were all emergency, and make a motion to approve that.
Second.
Motion for emergency, seconded, roll call.
Counsel Barton Absinthe, Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudas Absinthe, Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Annett?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Starbitt?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Licensing, Counsel Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. President. Unanimous vote of the committee, motion to approve. Second.
Motion made, seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public properties and parks, Counselor Starbitt.
Thank you, Mr. President. Unanimous vote to allow property owner at 440 Summer Street to redeem his property for all monies due, in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion, roll call.
Counsel Barton Absinthe, Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudas Absinthe, Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Annett?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Starbitt?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
New business.
We have a discussion with the utility companies and the ISD director regarding double poles and wires hanging throughout the City of Lynn.
Okay, before we get started, since I started this two weeks ago, do you mind if I speak for a minute?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Last year, right around the same time, we had the utilities company stand before us, explain the process about what they go through to eliminate double poles. It's not working. And I don't want to hear any excuses. I've got, within my house, five poles that have been sitting there, double poles for two years. But it's not just the double poles in the city that, that every council has an issue with. It's hanging wires, whether it be Comcast or Verizon, I don't care. You drive through the city, it, it's just disgusting, the way the wires look. And National Grid. When you dig a hole in the street, you're supposed to come back and fix it, and you don't. So I'm going to ask my fellow counselors not to allow any more special permitting for the utility companies. I'm going to ask Mike Donovan, the head of ISD, and Andy Hall, the head of the DPW, to sit with, on a committee with me, and to follow up and make sure that you guys are doing your job. I know up State House, they, they make it so that we can't levy any kind of fines against the utility companies. But I gotta, I gotta tell you, I'm fed up. And not only just with the things that I'm talking about, you guys were always asking if you can go door-to-door in our city, and we explained that there's a process. And whether you get permission or you don't get permission, your people are showing up at our, our people's doors, our citizens' doors, at all hours of the day, and on the weekends, trying to sell cable TV, or whatever it may be. But I'm letting you know how I feel as a ward counselor, I'm, I'm just fed up. We created a utilities committee to, to try to work with and help the issue, and it really hasn't done anything to help it, so. Counsel Capano?
Yeah, I couldn't have put it any, any better than you. I, I'd just like to know if there's a plan, you know, to reduce, start reducing the, the double poles and, and get an answer, you know, when you ride by a telephone pole and you see a wire wrapped around a stop sign, I mean, why do we have to even call to do that? That shouldn't, you know, this, this should be something that the company does on their own, not something that we should have to call and complain about. So, you know, I'd like to know that there's some kind of a plan. I would support, you know, you know, what, what you're saying. I mean, we've done that before. You know, so if, if you, if you start a committee like that, I'd like to know, you know, like on, one month from now, we're going to have three or four poles down. We, we said that for every pole, we even tried to compromise. We said for every pole that comes up, you got to take one or two of them down, you know, at least start the process. But we don't really get any feedback, and if we don't say anything, it's not like anything, the problem would definitely get worse. So it's not like they have a plan, a well-thought-out plan that they, that they're working on. It's, it's just from us complaining that they're even here or even talking about it. Otherwise, there'd be wires hanging all over the place, even worse than it is right now, and there'd be more double poles everywhere. So I, I'd like to know, you know, what, what can we do about it? You know, we want to solve this problem. I'm, I'm sure it's not like this in every other city in town.
I can, I, Counsel, I'm going to tell you, I had some wires that were cut on a side street that, I don't know if it was Comcast or Verizon, probably about 200 feet worth of wire that was wrapped around a telephone pole, laying in the street.
Otherwise, there'd be wires hanging all over the place, even worse than it is right now, and there'd be more double poles everywhere. So I, I'd like to know, you know, what, what can we do about it? You know, we want to solve this problem. I'm, I'm sure it's not like this in every other city in town.
I can, I, Counsel, I'm gonna tell you, I had some wires that were cut on a side street that, I don't know if it was Comcast or Verizon, probably about 200 feet worth of wire that was wrapped around a telephone pole, laying in the street. It took about a month for somebody to come and finally cut those wires out. Now, I know ISD has to go out sometimes and cut the wires down. It's a public safety issue. Forget about aesthetics in the neighborhood, but Comcast and Verizon and National Grid are not doing their job.
I'd like to hear from Mike Donovan.
And I appreciate him coming here.
Are we doing something wrong? What can we do? You know, what are the next steps? I'd like to see if Mike could address that, if he's still here.
We're part of the system that takes these double poles down. We have facilitated the streetlights, and the old fire alarm's still up there. I, I'm not making any excuses, but it is a complicated process because of all the different utility companies involved. The process is very slow, and the best I can say is, the utility companies that are in Lynn aren't giving it their utmost time. And we can contact them when we know where the ball is, as they say. As the wires come off from the top of the pole down, then it's each utility company's responsibility of, depending on who's next after the, the prior one wire was taken down. We can try to facilitate it by making phone calls and, and putting pressure on, on the, the liaison to the community who we deal with. Unfortunately, that doesn't always work and translate to the operations people who send the trucks out there to make the work happen. I, I think the best point at this point, best thing we can do at this point in time is to approach the Department of Telecommunication and Energy and let them know that what's going on in the city is not acceptable, that we have poles that have been out for a couple of years that, that aren't being addressed, and move it to the people who regulate these utilities. I mean, them coming here and telling us a nice story, no, that's nice to them, but we don't regulate them. There is somebody in Boston who regulates them. We have issues with them, and, and it's time to put these issues on paper and send it to them, and then talk to our state representatives and get them to push some buttons at the DTU and, and, and work from there. It's the only way to deal with, with these companies at this point in time, in my opinion.
Counsel Calucci?
The majority of the poles in the City of Lynn are owned by Verizon.
Verizon. Thank you. So, Counsel Walsh?
So, I, I have a, a paper here that shows the amount of poles that need to be, you know, I guess, addressed in some way or another, and I think it was provided by Verizon. It looks like the most exten, you know, extensive amount of poles that need to be addressed are with National Grid, 221 poles. Is that accurate?
Yes, sir, that's the same report that I have.
So, is somebody here from National Grid? Can we, who would address that? Come up.
Good evening, I'm Dan Cameron with National Grid, with offices at 170 Memphis Street in Malden. Before I start, I am, some of you know me, and I've covered the City of Lynn for a few years now, but it's gonna be some changes here. Faith Hassel, Faith Hassel's with me, she'll be, she's actually transitioning into the City of Lynn, so we're both here to actually answer your questions.
Is, is there, I mean, I'm looking at this, this, this is correct, 221 poles that you guys have?
That is correct, yes.
What, what did, just with Counsel Capano said, what's the plan to get that number off there? It's 221. I mean, the list that I have has single digits here and there. I mean, 221 is, is a lot of poles. I mean, the closest thing to you is 17 that Lynn has, that Lynn needs to get something off of. Why 221? Why is it so much wack?
Let me just take a minute to explain, like Mr. Donovan said, you know, there are, in the City of Lynn, we have 11 different parties that are attached to various poles. We're all, obviously, on all of them, and we are first. And to correct one statement that was made, we now have custody of all poles in, in Lynn. In other words, we, we set the poles. Up to about a year ago, that responsibility was shared, and it happened to be in Lynn, that telephone, Verizon set the poles. Now National Grid sets poles everywhere. But Verizon will remove the pole once everyone has transferred off. We are the culprit right now. We, our numbers are not good. We, but in terms of the entire city, it's not bad. I mean, you have upwards of 8,000 to 9,000 poles in the city. Right now, we're on 222. We're aware of this. We do have a plan to, to attack that.
What?
I can't give an exact number, but I can tell you that number will substantially improve by the end of this year. Once we transfer, then obviously everyone else's list increases. So the, the pecking order is, you know, National Grid is first, followed by your fire alarm, street lighting, you guys, the City of Lynn now owns the streetlights, so you'll be part of that process. It was on to Comcast, any private fiber, and then Verizon, and once Verizon is off, they take the pole with them.
Counsel Capano?
So, what is the plan? I mean, say, there's a plan, and when you say there's gonna be a substantial improvement by the end of the year, that's the type of language that we always hear. It really doesn't mean anything. What is a substantial improvement? Is that most of the poles? Is it 10 poles? Is it 50 poles?
Can't really commit to an exact number, but I, I would say it's in that range, you know.
Between 10 and?
No, no, no. The higher number, the highest number, you know, 50 to, 50 to 60.
Why not all of them? Seriously. I, I, I mean, I don't think that's unreasonable, to be honest with you, that, and I'm not kidding you, if, if your people worked for me, I'd fire them, because they, they don't care about the job they do. And I see wires hanging after they go, and they cut them off a house, whether it be a cable for a TV or a phone wire, or I see the markings of, of the utility post and, and the way they leave their job sites, I mean, it's just, it's unbelievable. And Lewis Street, we just spent $2 million now on Lewis Street three years ago, and you come back and you gotta dig up holes all along that you were supposed to come back within a year and take care of that. Now you drive down it, and it's the same what, what it was before. And you can go anywhere in the city, and I want you to take a ride down Essex Street, around 120 Essex Street, and look at the way those hot wires are hanging off of that pole. And you tell me that's satisfactory? I, I gotta tell you, you guys, I mean, I know you're getting everything, your butts kicked because of these storms that we just had. I get all of that. But what you've been doing to this city for the last few years is intolerable. I'm not, I'm not gonna stand for it anymore, Counsel Capano.
I'd like to call Mike Donovan up here one more time, because I, I think he had a good idea. Mike, you, you had mentioned, because I think we've done this in the past a while back, a regulatory authority at the State House that would oversee, or is supposed to oversee, you know, the, the utility companies' work in the city. Is that what?
Yes, the Department of Telecommunications and Energy, I believe it is our utilities, DTU or DTE, I can never remember the exact, but, yes, yes.
I'd like to make, at least, just interrupt this discussion to, to make a motion that we send a letter to the regulating authority, and Mike, if you could help draft that letter, I'd like to do that as soon as possible from the full city council.
So, motion has been made that we draft a letter with Mike and possibly turning Lamanna to the regulators?
Yes, I, I don't know who, who they are, but you do, right? And I'd like to know who that is myself.
Yes, sir.
And if I may add, the state delegation as well, a lot of the holdup is at the state, at the, at the state level, not giving cities and towns the ability to properly find poles that are up for two, three years.
Counsel Walsh?
Is, is Comcast and Verizon cable regulated by them also, or is it just the electrical, gas utilities?
I believe they both are, I believe, with their, their lines that are on the poles.
Thank you.
And before we go any further, I just, I want to say thank you to everybody that came tonight, and I know you see, you're sensing a lot of anger, and there is. I get your jobs, they're hard, and you're not the ones that are totally responsible, but yet you're the ones who represent the company, so it's frustrating. And, and I know it's not just Lynn. I know there are other communities that are dealing with the same issues that we're dealing with, but really, I mean, you come to us and you ask us to give permission so you can rent a wire in the street or put a pole up somewhere, but all the work that's still gotta be done in the city, we just keep giving you permits. I don't know, I mean, I don't know what my fellow counselors feel, but I, I don't, feels though we should continue to do that.
I'd like to vote on the motion. To vote on the motion.
Okay, vote on the motion. Roll call. Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
On Peter's motion.
Counsel Barton Absin, Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakutis Absin, Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Annett?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Staubed?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes.
Counsel Lozey?
Two things, Mr. President. Congratulations to the Celtics, winning their third game tonight.
Yep, we missed another one.
And I'd like to make a motion under new business regarding Union Hospital. If Madam Clerk would read off my proposed regarding the $30,000 from partners for a master plan. If, if you don't have it, Madam Clerk?
No.
I, I'll read it, and then we can enter it into the record.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Okay, thank you. Order that His Honor the Mayor is hereby authorized to enter into a tri-party agreement between the City of Lynn, Lynn Economic Industrial Corporation, and the North Shore Medical Center, whereby North Shore Medical Center will donate $30,000 to the EDIC for the purpose of engaging a consultant to prepare a master plan for the, for and of the land lying between and bounded by Dartmouth Street, Anchor Road, Lynnfield Street, and Woodland North.
And if I get a second on that?
Second.
Seconded, discussion, roll call.
Counsel Barton Absin, Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci Absin, Counsel Calucci. Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Annett?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Staubed?
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Nope, we have, I'm sorry.
Nope, we have more, I'm sorry.
You're not going home tonight. You're not going home. We have an order that the City of Lynn accept Massachusetts General Law 64 and Section 3 to impose an excise tax on the retail sales of marijuana for adult use at the rate of 3 percent.
So moves. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I just want to say that this is another long night. There's only one other person that I wanna, would want to spend the night with other than all of you. I never get to spend that night with. Counsel Field, you have something you want to say?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to announce that next Tuesday, here in the council chamber, we've opened the council chamber to the public for an opioid addiction in the City of Lynn, the challenges we face and how we can help. As Chair of the Opioid Subcommittee, along with my counsel, my colleagues, Counsel Walsh and Counsel Chakutis, along with the other city council, and Michelle Desmaris from Lynn Public Health, the director there, we welcome the panelists that include District Attorney John Bludgeett, a community liaison, street advocate, and parent, Patrick Byrne, Sheriff of Essex County, Kevin Coppinger, Director of Behavioral Health and Prevention Programs at Bridgewater, Wendy Kent, Dr. Kyame Mahanaya, Chief Executive Officer for Lynn Community Health, and Chief of Police here in the City of Lynn, Mike McGary. They'll speak on opioids. That forum will begin around 5:30 with different organizations that provide services for opioid abuse, families that are affected by it, individuals that recognize that they may have a substance abuse problem. I've attended a number of these conferences, specifically listening to these six panelists. I encourage everyone to either attend or to follow along on LynnCam at home. What you know now, I guarantee you'll learn a lot more by listening to these six panelists. I'm honored to chair this committee. I'm honored to be supported by my colleagues on the city council, the mayor's office, the Lynn Public Health, and, and I encourage this open forum for anyone in the city to attend here in the council chamber next Tuesday, May 1st. Thank you.
I also want to add to that, that I know Brian's been working on this since the day he got inaugurated into office, and he's put a lot of time and effort into it. I know other councilors have been involved, but he's really done an awful lot for this. And I also encourage, if you can't make it here that night, that the public watch on TV, this is a devastating illness that's affecting our community, so I just want to say, good job.
Thank you.
Counsel Annett?
Mr. President, I have an announcement to make and also an invitation. This Saturday, there's a, a quiet New Year and Community Fair at the Lynn Commons, starting from 10:30 to 5 o'clock, so everybody invited, and usually 6,000 to 7,000 people attend the fairs, so I hope you all attend, and it'll, it'll be great, and you all are gonna have fun. Thank you.
Is there free food and beer?
There's no beer, sorry.
Aw, man.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.